Which is really our last item for the this whole retreat, which you all have been so great focused on, is to to share with you the drafts of our area, the two area plans we've been developing. We're going to get those up on the screen here, and I'm going to invite my colleagues, Mark Bowers from Kimlin Horn and Phyllis Gerald, the City Center, planning to come up here with me in the interest of time, and I know it's getting getting late for all of us. I'm going to go through the presentation and give you some of the highlights, and Mark and and Phyllis will be able to answer any further questions as we get into that. At this point, what we want to share with you today, what's been in your packet, is a draft for each of the two areas, and the direction that we are seeking at this point is whether whether you feel comfortable with the the drafts to the point that we can begin discussing them in the community. So this is the this is the first kind of first conversation, not the final recommendation of this. And so that's that's what we're looking at for for today. So let me start here. And are you going to set the other one over there?
For Derek.
Oh, you guys have the other one. Okay. Okay, small area, so the small area plans. So as we discussed last year at the at the retreat, the small area plans of that bridge between Lewisville 2025 and the implementation, we discussed the reason we're doing that last year, and the outline of the plans that we have drafted, and that you find there is shown here. There will be an executive summer, but basically, we've tried to be pretty concise and make these plans something that people could read and digest, and not something that's just going to be a, you know, a doorstop somewhere. And so that's that's what our goal has been. We've gone through the process we discussed last year, looking at the existing conditions, getting the stakeholders involved, developing drafts of the vision and the direction, looking at community character and design issues, and developing action tools. So all of the plans that you see include all of those. We're at now the stage, we want to share these with you before we go out and do an additional workshop in each of the areas, and other opportunities in communities to get feedback. So that's where we want, we want to share the ideas with you today, and get your thoughts and and advice, and then we'll be doing that public involvement. We'll be talking further with Planning and Zoning and Parks Board, and of course, back on you again. So what I'd like to do today is just to set some of the key concepts for each of the two plans, and so I'm going to try to keep most of the presentation over here, but in a couple of places, we've got some maps that go with the the list of some recommendations. So when we're at that point, we're trying to see if we can use both of the screen area to back me up on that. Okay. So so the first one of the two is Old Town North, and the study area for this one, just to remind you all, begins at College Street here on the south, Keely on the east, I-35, and the Kansas City Southern Railway, except for this little extension that connects it up to Lila. We felt like this was very important to get that connection to Lila and this part of the community tied in with Lila as part of this study. So that's the study area. We did, and I'm going to try to go through these fairly quickly, because I know you have them in the packet. So we got a good, really solid input from folks in this community. I have to say, this is about the most diverse community of participants that I've seen in an open house, of A, H, and all the rest, and they had a lot of really great ideas as far as what they like about this area, what they would like to see. Those features are listed here as I'm going through their highlights. Based on that set of highlights, we identified a set of issues and opportunities for this area in particular. Part of this is about building on the success of Old Town. Part of this is making sure that the existing neighborhoods continue to be vital and desirable. But part of it is about doing some new things, and that's connecting with green spaces and doing something about what we're calling the creative new businesses or creative mix, which is something that's different than what you might have thought about a few years ago for this area. It ties in with some of the discussion we had yesterday about Bishop Arts and that Oak Cliff area. So those are some of those objectives. The strategic direction is at a couple of levels. The first is a vision statement, and the vision statement is here. Go north of Old Town to find nature, charming neighborhoods, and convenient business locations connected to the heart of Lewisville and the rest of the North Texas region. So this is obviously the big picture vision of what this community would like to be. Along with that, I want to point out this name, Old Town North, because when we started talking about this area, we didn't really think of it as that. We were thinking maybe North End or something as the as the kind of character of this area. And the folks in the community said, we really think Old Town North best describes what how we think of it. So that's a change from some of the earlier materials that you might have seen when we were working on this like last summer and fall. So that's the kind of name at the moment. There's a set of guiding principles in your packet, and they follow up on all of those issues and opportunities that we described before. The idea of seamlessly extending Old Town's character to the north, the idea of access, multimodal access to Old Town and to the DCTA station, that real strong emphasis on connections with nature, Lila, but also nature within the area. So those are the the guiding principles. The framework plan, and this is where I'm going to try to see if we can juggle the two screens, this is where we start to get into the geography and the concepts in the physical area. And so we'll look at natural assets, mobility network, and the future development patterns. And so the first one of those is natural assets, and if Eric can get to the point of this map over there. And I'll go to the list. And so there's a set of particular recommendations about the framework for dealing with and benefiting from the natural assets in this area. I'm not going to try to go through each one of these today, but I do want to hit just a couple of the ones for this area, and I'll hit a couple of the ones for for Southwest as well. One of these is something that goes back to the idea of the green and connecting the green and making that a signature of Lewisville, and that is the idea that at this intersection of I-35 and Valley Ridge, inside that that the circle there, plant a new forest, create a new native forest of appropriate trees, so that when someone's coming on 35, they see that, they say, oh, this is a different kind of a city here. This is a different community. And in the question and answer, we can talk further about this because of Mark's experience working with Tech dot on projects like this in other communities. So that's that's one of the ideas here. Some of these other ideas continue, like Heritage Trail is very consistent with what you've had in the Park Plan. Although that this property that you own here as an open space is kind of tucked away behind that neighborhood, so it's probably not the best central, really, active engagement. But we were thinking of something like community gardens. When we saw, when I saw TJ's idea about the pollinator gardens and the pocket fruaries, we think that's a that's a good possibility for the area to hear. That would be a natural asset to the neighborhood, obviously continuing the connections here to Friggin Park, and the connections up to Lila being important ones. The other thing I want to mention is, boy, this number five is, is the rodeo grounds. And the rodeo grounds came up briefly yesterday, and I said, we're going to get back to that. In talking to the community, there was a lot of interest in how can we make this better part of our neighborhood, and how can we benefit from this this open space that's here, at the same time recognizing the tradition of the rodeo, the importance of that activity and of the group that's been, the Saddle Club that's been there, and all of that. So we started thinking about, are there ways to use the rest of the land for the neighborhoods or walking dogs or what have you during times that are not rodeo times? And just in the very recent times, in the last couple of weeks, the Lewisville Saddle Club has come to the city staff and 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 said, hey, we're interested in a different kind of partnership than what we've had in the past. We may be interested in having you take on something more active that would still allow us to do the rodeo, but would give, would would change that arrangement and some of the the restrictions that have been in place before now. Donna, do you want to summarize that?
I probably, Eric has had the most ready.
So real quick, Council, this this property is about eight to nine acres, has a long history. Right now, it's platted as a little bit a lot. Ten, twelve years ago, we converted that. JC's owned some of that. The Saddle Club's been around since the late 50s, but their numbers are dwindling, their their dollars are dwindling. So right now, it looks like we're doing an entire assessment of the entire property. The way the current lease is right now, everything inside the pipe railing of the arena is owned by the Saddle Club. Everything outside is Lewisville. Council put about $400,000 to $450,000 into new stands, new ADA access to the parking lot. Incidentally, the stands that were there were actually a part of the International Speedway back in the late 60s. But it looks like what's going to happen is, we're going to go through and do an assessment, see what we need to do, probably look to the Saddle Club to say, do you want to turn over the lease to the city and lease from the city, run the rodeo event and Labor Day, but but get out of the business of of operating this through the years. And it looks like that's probably a good, a good, a good probability. But we do own all the land. Times are changing. You have the presidential property to the east of Keely, so parking's going to be an issue. More an issue as for the past, but I think there's a huge opportunity here to use this property for more than it's been. And I think the Saddle Club is welcoming some help in the provision to get out of that operation outside at this point of the Labor Day weekend rodeo.
So the recommendation that's in the area plan is including the rodeo grounds in the community's open space network, so continuing the rodeo activities, but looking at some other things that could build on that and take advantage of some of that other area and have that be a year-round benefit. So that's part of the recommendations in terms of the natural asset framework for this plan. So the next area in terms of the framework plan is the mobility network. And again, I want to touch on just a couple of the key things here. One of those is the idea of completing the pedestrian and bike networks in this area. There are neighborhoods where there are missing pieces of sidewalks, and so if we want this to be an area where people could walk or bike to Old Town, we think that's an important thing to connect. We also want to make sure to strengthen the connections to the DCTA station that goes along with creating an appealing college street. So both of those things, I think, are in line and strengthen the idea of this as a community where you have a lot of choices in how you get around. The future development concepts, you can see here on the screen, and I think the the concepts themselves really tie in with things that we've been talking about and those guiding principles. But one of the things that I wanted to note to you is the way that we would express this development concept is with what we call place types. So these are not zoning categories. This this plan is not a zoning map, but rather, these are, these categories describe the kind of place that we want to create in the different parts of this area. And so for this, for the Old Town North, there are several of these. For each one in the plan itself, you can see information about what's the intent, what kind of a character of a place is this supposed to be. There are images like this that you see in the document itself. There are also lists of what would be the primary uses, what would be secondary uses, what would be the indicators like a density or heights and things of that kind, so that it gives you a framework for reviewing particular development proposals or zoning requests. But it has the flexibility that we talked about yesterday in terms of what somebody might be proposing. This one that you see here on the screen of suburban living is a fairly straightforward one to reflect the existing communities, those existing neighborhoods. Employment mix is also one that's sort of easy to understand, and we feel is appropriate for some of the areas within this, within Old Town North, where there is already business development, and we expect to see more of that kind of development. Commercial as well, the areas especially right off of I-35 as you come off on Valley Ridge, there is obviously commercial there now. We think that a lot of that area is going to still be primed for commercial kind of activity. But the one I wanted to to talk for just a minute about is what's called creative mix. And I was struck yesterday when you heard Jim Lake talking about having that flexibility and trying to get those creative people in and trying to kind of leave room for that. One of the people at the Open House for this area, when asked to describe it, said, it's crunchy. And I didn't know what that was. I said, what is that? I'm too old to know what that was. But as we talked further through it, and I got a younger person to explain it to me, that means really kind of creative, environmentally aware, really that new kind of live-work-natural setting, which was really exactly the kind of a character that we see in the research that young entrepreneurs are looking for, that many millennials are looking for, that that kind of knowledge-based businesses and creative-type businesses are looking for. And so the idea here would be to look at an area where there would be a lot of flexibility in the zoning and that pattern, and have that eclectic mix of uses, the live-work, restaurants, art galleries, and so forth, and try to make that into something that's that's different than Old Town, but really an attractive and appealing draw to those people that are going to be the future economy and the future residents. Parks and Green Space is a place type that I think you can recognize. So this is the diagram that shows how you might think of those. Yellow being the suburban reflecting those existing neighborhoods, the commercial over here, as I said, off of 35, the employment mix here on this this new extension of Valley Ridge, and then this part here in the middle being that creative mix. Right now, there is a mix of stuff in there. There's a mix of some auto-related, some industrial, some office, some older residential. So it's a mix, but some of those buildings could really have that kind of character that you heard about last night from the Dallas Design District and from Oak Cliff, and could really have the possibility for that, that kind of character. So we think that that's a really exciting possibility for this part of of Old Town North. So that's a recap of that. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on the community character and design at this point, except for a couple of things. But we realize, and I think you all know, the importance of that design in establishing a character that people will love to be there, and that will make, that will enforce the, reinforce the idea of Lewisville as a distinctive place and not just one of many different sort of looking, similar-looking communities. So we've recommended a set of gateways and identity points for the area, both at the level of major gateways, that place where I was talking about the Blue Forest on I-35, for example, pedestrian gateways as well, and identity nodes were suggested along College, because we don't want that to feel so much like a gateway, like you're leaving or entering Old Town or Old Town North, but more that it's an identity that you recognize you're moving into a place that's connected but a little bit different. So we've got those recommendations. Public realm corridors are ones where we're recommending that there be some particular standards for development in the public right-of-way, the streetscape. This is not looking so much at development, because much of this is already developed, but making sure that the design, the landscaping, all of those things tie in with the character of the area. And so the recommendations on those quarters, and there are a couple of particular, I forgot to list it over here, a couple of particular places where we think that design overlays are appropriate. So design overlays would look at not only that public side, but the private developments that would be occurring. The first one of these here is very familiar to you, because these are the overlays from the I-35 overlay district. So we're simply reflecting those. Obviously, this needs to be consistent with what you have there. We're looking at such a design overlay along College, this area north of College, to try to maintain that character of those existing neighborhoods, that existing housing, so as development would come in to fill in there, that it would be of a design that was compatible, comparable to that. Right here on this corner, where you see this number three, it's a little different dynamic than here, because this is not a character that you want to retain. This is, but we think this is a great location for some neighborhoods serving commercial, because it would help this area, these neighborhoods, as well as the area that's developing around the DCTA station and further connect to DCTA. But we think the design of that would be very important. So that's that's one. Then in the area along Valley Ridge, we recognize that there's development that's already happening there, but we think some design standards on things like screening, like the placement of bay doors and so forth, might be advantageous to make sure that the private development is, lives up to the level and the character of the investments that you all have made in the public, public.
Karen, can I just watch real quick on College? We've implemented on College Street from Keely all the way down to really 35 inclusive of of the park and the pool. We're going to be doing a shared bike lane with the Sherroh with the road, or the Chevron's, the paintings, or the bicycles, and the Chevron markings are 250 feet, and bringing out some traffic calming nodes at the intersections and mid-blocks to give that a fresh look at landscaping. So we are incorporating that into the College Street plans right now via our consultant through engineering, we met with parks, we met as a group. So that is happening right now. We will do some stakeholder meetings with the public to show them. I think they'll like it. We're not taking additional right-of-way. We generally may take some clips here or there, but it will not, at this point, impact their homes. We'll improve the sidewalk to the north. We'll, hopefully, we'll put a sidewalk in on the north, and we'll improve the one on south. So just be aware of that. We'll get back with you with more on that later.
But that concept and that the design that Eric is talking about are very much in line with that idea of that public round corridor along there and the the design guidelines. Incidentally, I should say that we talked about whether or not there should be some strict kind of design in this creative mix area, and ran into a couple of considerations. One, that there is so much of that that's already developed, and so you would be thinking about filling in or reinvesting in those areas. And also this idea of a creative mix and that kind of reinvestment, that we don't want to make it too difficult and too challenging. So we felt like rather than coming in with some really precise guidelines that we should focus on encouraging and really building up that that kind of energy, and that, and then see how that eclectic mix works, and that may be a very good place for something like a form, form-based design or something like that. So when you put all of those together, you get what we call here the framework plan. So you start to see how all those pieces fit to create a community that's got that mix of uses. I think it creates more flexibility, more opportunity for the people who live, who own the properties in the area, and strengthens the existing neighborhoods, and I think is real responsive to what people said that they would like to see. The last part of the action plan has a set of action steps. Obviously, we want this plan to be carried out, so we want some particular recommendations and things that you can do, and in fact, in some cases, like Eric was describing, things that are already getting started. For Old Town North, there's a list of 26 action steps, and I'm not going to talk about all of those, but I want to talk about just a couple, just three of them to highlight some of the ones that I think are maybe of most note or interest. The first is this one here about the branding campaign. I told you earlier about the evolution of the idea that this is Old Town North, and that came out of the discussions that we had with with stakeholders. But before we kind of tie it all down and start printing up the banners, we feel like it's appropriate to have a wider discussion of that and get some more feedback and see if that really is the the right kind of of name, that branding deal that you were talking about yesterday. So we think that that's an important step in this particular area, to get them involved in going on that. Similarly, there are several recommendations about that creative mix area, about involving the stakeholders, and by that, I don't just mean the people who are there now, but really working with some of the some entrepreneurial groups, looking at some of the other artists and people like that that might be, that are not there today, but might be a part of the future of the area. So going beyond just just those folks and looking ahead to some of the things that might happen as we go forward. We've covered a lot of these development and community character recommendations already. There are a number of very specific capital investment recommendations. Some of those are the ones Eric was talking about. A number of these tie right in with with Stacy's Parks Plan and the improvements that she suggested for that. And then the programs and initiatives, basically, is about communication with people here and with people in the rest of Lewisville. But then I did want to also point out, in terms of partnerships, recommendation number 20 here about the rodeo grounds and the working with those stakeholders to meet with them. This is particularly important, given what Eric was just sharing, to sit down with them and figure out what's the appropriate partnership, given their current circumstances, not, you know, with the, with their changes in their own organization, and and work out the right way to continue the rodeo, continue those traditions, and add to that with other activities in the area. So that's one of the other recommendations in terms of Old Town. There's a lot more information in the draft that we've given you in your packet. As I said a few minutes earlier, at this point, we're not looking for final decisions on any of these, but we would like to be able to get some feedback from you. Are we on the right track? Is this something that we're, because what we would like to do next is go out and have some more discussions with the community about some of these ideas and get their feedback to bring back to you. So with that, let me ask you all for some some feedback and thoughts on on these recommendations.
I'll take two.
Okay, take two, okay. We've got another coming up. Okay, TJ?
It sounds like we're getting great engagement with the neighborhood, and that's to me a huge part of it. And then the, you know, the nice thing of seeing the green getting extended, you know, how we, how we make a low-impact change, it's still very visible. And I think that's a, that's a great way to do it without, you know, clipping corners and costing money, and we can still, we can still change the environment. So I like the approach. I think it's low-impact, low burden, which is highly engaged. So those are the things I want to see. Get to you, I think it's awesome.
I mean, every discussion I hear with citizens, it's always about trails, 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 and extending the green, and I think that greenbelt through there and the rodeo grounds, I think are, yeah, big changes with not necessarily a lot of investment. Actually, greenbelt may be more investment.
But there certainly will be some, and I would say, I don't want you to, you know, think that there's not, but but I think there are a number of these that that are not giant in the past.
I want to throw in two quick comments. Obviously, yesterday, I brought up the rodeo grounds. I think that's a huge underutilized asset, so anything, everything that we can, you know, make something better out of it, especially for the people that live in the city, because they don't see which benefit. In fact, sometimes they see more of an annoyance than they. The other is, I'm really excited about the idea of designing the street. I'm not going to pick on a particular house, but it's near City Hall, and as you drive down that street, it's just as glaring disconnect to see that one house and the rest of the neighborhood. And so, you know, as properties, as we get gentrification and, you know, maybe, I don't think there's any infill properties in that area, but, you know, a house that burns down because it's not worth repairing, or it's cheaper to build a home, I hate to start mutilating the neighborhood.
Eric?
Are we still talking about the north part?
Yes.
Okay. The rodeo's always been a tough deal, tough to deal with, because we couldn't have it connected to Main Street. It just doesn't work. Down in front of those four, about Lewisville I C and their new Career Center that they're doing, they're going to have an agricultural component in it. That may have rodeo in it and all that other stuff, which would be another thing to do with the rodeo.
And the CTC also has rodeo.
The CTC, yeah, that's good. Both of them, and Midwestern might also have. So we've got different higher education groups coming in. I don't, I don't know how we changed too much on to get to get the rodeo ground more part of me. We tried on numerous occasions, and it was just too far away, or when we had a big project going, it rained when we were having certain things going on.
Like the connection you have in Western.
Yeah, and then you say, well, it didn't work last year, let's don't do that again. So.
I think one thing they heard from the neighborhood was that the neighborhood really felt like the rodeo grounds was off limits. So to be able to take that fencing down and really be able to tie it into the neighborhood and give some access to the, to the rodeo grounds, it really looked hard.
I think they were, they felt that they were completely disassociated.
They did. Yeah, the issue with the rodeo grounds, because of the playdays, and that would be something to have to work through, when people come with their horses, obviously, they have trucks and trailers, and that takes lots of space, and I think that's probably why some of that fencing was love. So, but there's a lot of issues to work through, obvious. Another issue is, if you want to use it for event purposes, there's no restrooms, and that's where you start getting into some.
But I think there's some, I mean, on the one hand, you heard, we talked yesterday about the P S and Charo and some of those kinds of activities there. On the other hand, there's still a lot of days in the year where those are not going on, and if you have a place for people to go and walk, walk the dog, have a gazebo, to have a little picnic, or, you know, different kinds of things, and still leave enough space for those events and dealing with the park.
And before it was a rodeo ground, it was a boston back in the. And before it was a rodeo ground, it was a ball field back in the early 60s.
Old tennis courts.
Yeah. Tennis courts were there.
Tennis courts were there and it was a joint between the city and the J C's, but it was open. There was a nice, large trees there. The magic ball goes, it was a ball field there. And people did park there and they recreated back in the 70s, but then the agreement got with the rodeo grounds and the fencing went up and then the J C's went away and they had the tennis courts. Concrete's still there, but it was, returning to what it was. The original intent was a park-like setting in the north end.
And one last comment to the mayor's comment. Yes, we've tried to connect it to Main Street and to other events. It doesn't work and I think that's the message, is stop trying to do that and find its own separate purpose. And so Charo's a good example, find, you know, a purpose for it that isn't, give up on, you know, trying to connect with Main Street and it just doesn't work.
Yeah, and on the other hand, I would have to say that we don't need to connect it to Main Street for those events, but those connections of those green spaces and trails, I think is really what we heard a lot of. And so that prairie green trail, that connection from there up to Lila, the ability for somebody to ride their bike from that neighborhood to the CTA, all those connections, those are the ones I think.
That's a different connection.
Yeah, exactly.
That's a transportation connection.
Yeah, okay. So, so great. I'm so pleased that, that, that you're enthusiastic about that. Do we have?
A little, little tangent. What's the impact of making it a riding trail?
A what?
For horseback riding.
So, just because I ride a horse.
Well, that's why I asked. I grew up around them, so.
Yeah, I know, I know you did. And, and I think often it's very difficult to make choices on those type of trails and it always is going to drive parking. So there's some consideration. I know the mayor, for many years, would push equestrian trails and there's some complexity there, so we just have to.
Well, when I look at this, I, I think of kind of like a trailhead in.
If we could work something with Lila, they may be opposed to horses, but, but that would be an ideal place and you probably would have to have separate trails. They can be fairly close to get it, but they gave me seconds.
No, horses really don't like it if you ride them on a bicycle. Can't even.
That's just a training issue.
Well, with that, let me, let me then cover our southwest Louisville area plan. Again, we had a workshop out in the community. We went through just the same process that I instructed you through. And the issue, okay, so here's our study area. Just to remind you, this is your city limits. This is the city limits to the south here. Up this area is generally Oak.
Good.
Yeah.
Oh, touch it.
Go back.
Sorry.
Gina, go back.
Yeah, go back. Um, this is Oak Bend, so just beyond Oak Bend. And then these are the, basically the property fronted on Round Grove. So that was the study area that we identified for, for this southwest Louisville. So in terms of the community input here, and again, the workshop was not, I would say not, not as well attended, but we had some really interesting perspectives from diverse people following that community open house. We also had the opportunity to have some individual meetings with some of the major property owners and businesses in the area. Obviously, this area has quite a lot of business as well. So we asked them again about what were the things that were important to them. A lot of concern again about the sidewalks, the parks, sustainability, the green spaces, the very important areas here. Again, you see that some of the same interests of keep green space, have more trails and connectivity, build on the existing business environment, so we continue to attract more corporations. So the issues and opportunities we identified reflect those things. This is really a major employment center. I'll remind you that this is a really one of the last, the last place that you've got large trunks of land in, in larger ownerships. So it's an important asset from that standpoint for the community, for, for some kinds of employment uses that you might want to see and for some kinds of residential uses that you might want to see that could not really be done elsewhere in Louisville. The other opportunity, I think that we felt is number six here, applying Louisville's signature initiatives to the area. Right now, when you go there, there's not a real connection to a lot of the things from 2020 mod. And so using that and using the fact that this is a gateway into Louisville to really start telling that story to people who come here. So the strategic direction for southwest Louisville. Southwest Louisville affects dynamic corporations and diverse residents because of its natural areas, regional transportation access, desirable jobs and labor force, convenient shopping and diverse neighborhood choices. So that's the vision that we would see for the future. It combines both that employment and the residential components for the area. So it continues that kind of mix. Again, there's a set of guiding principles identified for the area, focus on a couple of those things I just mentioned, a gateway into Louisville, major employment center, contributing that mix of neighborhoods. In this area, one of those neighborhoods is the Creekside Noble Home Park. And so there are concerns and issues about how do we make that, how do we address some of the quality of life and infrastructure and some of the issues there, as well as just making sure that there's riding and diverse neighborhoods in this part of Louisville. In terms of the framework plan, as if we can, you are matching, matching boards here again. And I'm again going to just highlight a few of the key things that we're suggesting here. One of the things, when you go out there today and drive around, you see lots of trees on undeveloped areas, but you don't see and don't connect a whole lot with some of the other natural assets and you don't really know the story. You don't hear that extending the green component for Louisville. So among the natural asset recommendations here is, is the, the idea of incorporating natural features in new development. As you see here, these little shaded areas are areas of creeks and some of that is creeks and floodplains, some of that is big, the kind of dense stands of trees. And so as new development happens, we think those should be incorporated into the design of that development. So the development could be clustered so that there's still that open space remaining. We think that's an important part of the character of the area. The other thing that we really think is, is important, the second one here, plant a new native forest. And this again goes back to extending the green and the idea again with the public realm of as you're coming up 121 business, that there are a number of places where there's just land next to the road that nothing's there, you're not going to develop there. But it's the opportunity for that forest and then says, this is a different city you're in. And, and I am going to ask Mark, if you wouldn't mind, to just briefly summarize Tech Dot's approach because this, I know in years past, I would have said, well, Tech Dot will never agree to doing something like that along a facility, but Mark's experience is that their ideas are different.
Yeah, so, so years ago, I had the opportunity to be the project manager on a project with the Houston district as a consultant. And they called it the Green Ribbon Project. And it was the first green ribbon project where they came up with the look and feel for all of the highway corridors within the Houston district. One of the things that came out of that is within these large areas where interchanges are, that Tech Dot has significant right-of-way to come in and just fill it up with native plants, with trees, so that you in essence are creating these nodes of extensive landscaping. And then they would come in with mulch beds underneath. And the reason for that is so that there was no huge maintenance issue. They don't have to go in and mow it. They just let it become more of a naturalized zone. So they are now providing funding. They call it green ribbon funding. They've continued that term. And they have funding for communities that Tech Dot will provide for areas along Tech Dot corridors to go in with landscaping projects. A lot of times it's in the medians of farm-to-market roads that have turned into more urban corridors and they'll come in with more specific manicured landscaping and irrigation. But we think there's a great opportunity in these areas to just really let them go back to natural areas with the native trees. Some of these were probably more native prairie sites, but we can pull from some of the trees that would have grown within these areas and, and make that a reality here.
So again, I think this is a way to really make it clear, when you're driving north down there, you know you're in Louisville. You see that and that's, that's. In terms of the mobility network, I want to highlight just one thing here. As you all know, that this is where the Creekside Noble Home Park is right down here. Up here on Round Grove is the high school and is shopping. The people who came to the open house told us and about, and we heard other reports of, people who are living in the Noble Home Park are having to walk up there to Round Grove to get their groceries and walking with their kids in the strollers in the street to get up there. So we think that this is another area where completing that pedestrian and bike network is really critical. So that's a number of the recommendations you'll see here. You suggested pedestrian connections with light blue dashes and also the possibility of a soft surface trail connection here along, in a, what would be a more natural area possibly, that could be done as part of future development, that that could provide a different kind of an alternative. But we think, we think that that pedestrian and bike connection is a really important one and demonstrated by the situation of some of the folks who are living here currently.
Is it, talking about mobility, there's one intersection that's absolutely horrible and we probably can't do anything because I'm sure it's Tech Dot and they won't let us touch it. But if you're going south on Valley and the people wanting to get on 121, you have to cross over four lanes of traffic and there's never anybody that'll let you in, but a lot of people just want to go and make that U-turn underneath or stay on the access road. If you had a protected right turn lane that would let you do that and then a secondary right turn lane that you want to get on the 121, that traffic, you would open up cars to go through there much, much faster. But I'm sure it's Tech Dot who's probably.
It's Tech Dot. Wait, it's.
Take a look at that whole.
Intermodal. I think, I think we just do a pop-up turn lane. We just do it.
A pop-up.
And just show Tech Dot what it would be like if it was a real lane.
We just pour some concrete.
Yeah, yeah. Couple minutes.
We can sketch that and ask, ask.
But it may be when the 121 is finished, that whole intersection's different. I don't know.
That's a question.
Yes.
In terms of the future development concepts in this area, we do, as we said, want to continue the employment strength in the area, keep the basic neighborhood livelihood. I want to concentrate on these two recommendations. One, enhancing Round Grove's valuable and distinctive retail service and restaurant corridor. We think that that corridor can and should be more than what's there now, that as it, as we, as much as possible to try to encourage diverse kinds of restaurants, retail that's serving the neighborhood, less of an audio-oriented design and try to encourage on those properties that haven't yet developed to try not to replicate that sort of strict commercial auto parking lot kind of character of the area. And so we think that that's an important thing and a component that will add value for the future development in some of the other parts of this area, as well as to the neighborhoods that are already here around Round Grove and frankly, to the businesses and the employees who are there in the businesses that are here as well. The last point, and I'll show you this one, I'm happy to explain this, is that area that's west of Valley that's largely undeveloped, I mentioned a minute ago, that is, as you know, very heavily treed area, very rolling terrain, larger parcels that you don't have a whole lot in the rest of the city. We think it's important to maximize the benefits from the development in that area. And we've got really at this point, two options to suggest. We're not saying it has to be one or it has to be the other. In large part, it could be a market issue of what comes in there. But we think that as we look at that future, it's really important to think about it from the standpoint of maximizing value for the future users and for the city and for the package. So with this area, again, we're using the same set, the same idea of the place types that we talked about before. The first place type here called neighborhood revitalization would apply Creekside. So it would look at doing things to enhance the quality of life there now. And over time, should some of that redevelop, to look at ways of having that continue to be a, a place where there could be some reinvestment, revitalization, maybe some other kinds of cottage kind of residential or some other things like that in the areas that are out of the floodplain. Part of that is in the floodplain now, so there's really an issue about that, those possibilities. Clustered green residential is one of those two alternatives that I want to introduce to you for that west area. And the idea here would be that you would have smaller residential lots clustered within an area of permanent open space. So this is a concept, it's sometimes called conservation subdivisions, but what it does is it gives the same overall amount of development on the property, but it moves those, those homes to a place where they are more clustered so they can be more walkable and they're surrounded then by the open space, which would give you the opportunity to retain those tree areas, retain or create some trail connections and so forth. And by doing that, you can see as an example here, what that might be. That creates an amenity and in our mind, creates a different kind of housing than what you have currently to offer people. And that's, I think, a higher, a higher value and longer, more sustainable value kind of residential than what exists in other parts of Louisville. And I think there's, there are people starting to do some of this kinds of development around the region. So I think this is, this is probably the only, at least I think, maybe Nick and Richard think otherwise, but I think this is maybe the only place in Louisville that you would have the potential to create that kind of a housing type as an option. So this is a, a place type of what I am calling clustered green residential. I want to emphasize though, the total amount of development, the number of homes would be the same. You're not reducing the amount of development that's possible. And I know in, in places like Waters Creek, I think the value is probably as high or higher. And a lot of the economic research now is showing homes in this kind of a setting are higher value and retain their value. So I think it's a positive for the economy. Urban living, there are existing areas of those neighborhoods, as you know. Urban living, there are some existing higher density development properties. There's one area in particular where there's an older apartment complex that I think is more of a garden apartment. Should that redevelop, we think that it would be good to create some incentive for it to be able to develop in a more dense urban setting, rather than just staying as it is and kind of rather than. So we applaud that as well. Employment mix, again, as you'll see, a large chunk of this area, that's very important, of course. Commercial is along Round Grove mainly. We do have the high school in this area, so we have that public educational, lots of green space. And so the concept here, applying it, and notice this says option one. So under this, it would be an option where you're looking at that clustered residential possibility. So over here on this side, on the, the western coast side, you see this kind of hatched area of, of a place where you could have those residential clusters and then retaining, oops, shouldn't touch that, I should know that. The greener areas, some of that is floodplain, but some of that could be those connections where the trees are. And so retaining open space around the residential and still having the same amount of residential development. You see Creekside is the revitalization. You see all of the area here as employment mix, so there's an opportunity for a pretty wide range of flexibility about job generator uses here. And then you see that commercial along Round Grove. So this is option one. This would be with that idea of trying to attract that, that new kind of housing type, which we think ties in with Louisville's vision. And it would be a product that isn't really available in Louisville, not much as part of the region. The other alternative would be if that really needs and the market really suggests that non-residential is appropriate. We think that those employment makes, the employment makes category would also be appropriate to cluster so that you still retain that open space. You still could have that amount of development, but you're still creating a different kind of a character, a different kind of business opportunity or like a campus office, headquarter kind of an opportunity in that area. We think that's more in line with the kind of geography that's there. It's tough to develop this flat path for, for big box stores right in that area as well. And so we think that there's, there's value in looking at that as a, as a second alternative for that, in that part of this, this study area. The rest of this is the same. So really, the two options have to do with this western side. And we think at this point, we should kind of entertain and proceed with considering both of them as we go forward with the plan and as we continue to talk about it. both of them as we go forward with the plan, as we continue to talk about it in the community and talk to, and talk to businesses and so forth. So, then before we go through the other category, you see these are both organized in the same way as far as the characters, gateways, and identity here, the discussion we had a moment ago about, about text dotted, we really think that could be sort of a small amount here, a little bigger, and then the big area here. So, you've got sort of a staged gateway concept with that, with the trees, with the forest that Mark was talking about along text dotted, that introduces people to the fact that they are in Louisville, that there is a different kind of a community than otherwise. And there's also another gateway right here, as you come into Louisville on Round Road, that corner there would be an important place to have, have something that really designates and identifies and communicates the character of Louisville, the people coming into the city from that direction. The public ground corners here, this again, we recognize this is the same thing we showed you on the natural assets. We think that on both, along Valley, then on Edlin's Vista Ridge, that those are important public ground corners. Again, that's for looking at the streetscape design, the sidewalks, the landscaping and so forth within the public sector. And so, we think that those are areas where that, there should be attention to that. And then the design overlays, in this case, it's just one design overlay that we're suggesting here, and that is along Mappo. And that goes back to what I said a few minutes ago about the character of that and really enhancing that and making that into more of a people scale place than a tar scale place. And so, we think that that's an important component to the recommendations and the design overlay. So, we put all of those together again to a framework plan. And in this, in this action plan, we have 20 action steps identified. I'm just going to highlight two of them for you. First, in terms of strengthening Creekside, there are several recommendations actually that tie in with that Creekside neighborhood, and I know that the neighbors helping neighbors and the neighborhood services department have been active in building those relationships. I think there's more to be done there, there's more issues in terms of the infrastructure and investments and assistance there. So, we think that's one of the areas that's an important part of that, and really part of the capacity building and understanding what the needs are for those people. I think that also ties in well with things like the parks plan. I know the, the previous park plan, we took a look at that about park needs and looking at those circles of areas for distance from a park, there just was nothing in this area at all. And when you sit down, Matt Stacey showed you a little bit earlier today, you see this as an area with need. So, we think that that's an important element there. We also do think that that, looking at. Round, Round Road design is, is the other one that I wanted to highlight. That design overlay, we think is an important one. As development is coming in, that you should have those guidelines so that people clearly know what, what you're looking for in that area, and that can be used to help to guide the kind of uses and the character of the design that goes into that, that corridor along Round Road. So, that covered a lot of many key points, y'all. So, tell me again, this is, again, this is just, the ideas, we want to get your feedback on them before we go out and have some more conversations. So, I'm going to use the conversation.
I love that you guys are picking up on the diversity that's happening down there on 3040, from the ethnic groceries that are down there to the different types of restaurants, you know, even moving up into Walmart, but we've got several Korean business owners that are, that are in the area, Indian, Thai. I mean, it's, it's just, it's becoming kind of a cool mix down in that area, and if we can leverage that, I see, I see what Carrollton's been able to achieve with H Mart and that whole district up there, and if there's anything I'd want to of, that would be a huge thing. So, if we can, we can continue to encourage that, that development and that character, that, that's, I love that you see in that.
But if we can, I mean, that Business 121 and Round Grove Road, that intersection, it's just so boring, and.
It's so huge.
Yeah, if we could get a forest planted there and they would help out with the, you know, grant money or whatever to do it, and we could do it, that would make a huge difference in the look of that as you came through there. I think it would be fantastic, so.
It's a vast wasteland right now.
It's horrible.
It's a vast wasteland right now.
There's no personality whatsoever, it's just.
Have any, any thoughts and feedback on that idea, the clustering kind of development in the west, those two options I was just trying to.
Like the homes, that, I mean, I like that idea, and I think where they're on, if you go across the border, there's some very nice homes, there's a park there, and I think that they would be kind of, even though they've been in Louisville, they're pointing to be kind of connecting themselves that direction, but you've got the green belt between them and Creekside and all the industrial, I think, I think it could work.
I don't see an issue with it.
I like the idea of the houses. You have enough funds, just bump them down, so I would like, if I have to, get something back there.
Flower, Flower Mount has this setup, but they just can't seem to push one through. The neighbors say it's density, and they, they freak out, so I.
To me, the best example in the region is my family farm, I think, I don't know, do you want to gas other zip codes?
That's probably the best one.
Yeah, and it's, I think, it's an extremely successful residential, and that's also where the Waters Creek commercial, it's usually really, really part of that project. They, I forgot the numbers, how much acreage they were taking, but it's quite a lot, and those songs have sold well.
And it's a different riff on the, on the urban work mixed use, you know, it's dense and, and people are there, but there's spaces to go and hang out and just beat instead of having to maintain.
When you're in some of the, the less developed communities, people think, oh, I'm a one acre lot, I'm a five acre lot, and they're sitting in the houses there like this. With this idea, the people are clustered together, there's more sense of neighborhood, but the open spaces are not. And that's what, even the, the polls from the Realtors Association, you show, that's a high, high value for people.
A lot of your 55 and plus age restricted communities have this kind of vibe going on too, where they're, they're sharing common space.
All those really young people.
No, you got 55.
I don't, I have no judgment call on that. Maybe Mr. Kunkie's a little closer to that, maybe he should.
He's getting close to us again today.
Yeah.
Okay, other, other comments?
Just a quick comment, I mean, there's, there's, it's hard to find anything I don't like. It's just trying to step back now and prioritize and decide what really functions best and what's practical.
Well, in that case, let me close with the last couple of slides, which is really about.
Can I put one little caveat in there? Creekside, I have a little bit of concern just working with that owner, we can't get him to get water in that neighborhood fixed. So, so I, I do have some concern that they're, they're, there might not be a good partner there.
They will be a challenging partner.
I'm sure that, Ms. Aaron. Mayor, we remember that, you know, Ace Lane was a two-lane road that went down to then 121 and connected. Jackson Sanding gravel was here, and the, the property was really not right of way, so they deadended that, and to the most part, it's still, it's still there. This 500 to 600 homes that Ace was in before it was annexed into the city, so it's always been a concern of staff and the community and the residents that this large company that owns them does not seem to be too responsive to catching up with current status.
And, and I'd like to at least, if, if we can't get a good partner there, then I'd like, they are Louisville residents, they deserve water, they deserve all the other things that our residents expect, and if, if we can create the hammer to make that happen, then.
In light of the recent loss of water, and I think it was because of not, their actual water source at the time, it was because of their infrastructure on the property and being aging, we are seeking what remedies we can take on a enforcement level and from just an initial conversation, so we haven't done more. We look like we have new outside council to advise us, and we may have more avenues for enforcement than we originally thought.
That'd be great.
So, we are actively moving. I was waiting till after retreat to take that up, but that's one of my big priorities to keep actually off us on next week.
And it's, it is, it is a diversity housing type.
It is, it is for sure, and when you drive around it, there are, there are some where clearly people have invested in their homes there.
Yes.
And they're, they are, they're, they're residents, they need to have services, they need to have parks. But there are obviously infrastructure needs, as you read through the plan itself and a number of the implementation recommendations, Louisville in particular has focused on some of those strategies to work with the residents and with the property owner and with the issues to get the infrastructure to work on, so that's an important thing. So, let me just wrap up the next steps. What we'll be doing next month, really in terms of going to the outreach, we're planning to have a joint meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission, Parks Board, despise so much for both of them and both of what they're both doing, and then beginning the, the next steps of community outreach, both in terms, in terms of on the web, online, those kinds of things that we were talking about earlier in terms of public engagement. And then in, we're planning to have roughly in April, community workshops and refinements of that. These times are approximate, so we'll see how, how things go in terms of the timing, but roughly coming back in around the May or June timeframe to go back to planning and zoning for consideration, and then back to y'all. Obviously, that timing is kind of similar to the timing you're looking at part of that for I-35, so those two will may have to make sure that there's coordination and not confusion about those. From then until about the end of the fiscal year, we think that the focus should be on starting the implementation of these two area plans, deciding on those priorities and then beginning to move forward on those priorities, and beginning that overall development code process. With the lessons that we've learned through doing these area plans and through doing the I-35 overlay, we think we'll be able to focus and really scope out that object in a way that would be effective and efficient for everybody involved in, so that that would be a learning concentration for next year. I think that, you know, last year, we talked about a number of different places for area plans, and these are the first two, obviously. There's one area just north of Old Town North, Eric has been in discussion with the folks, so we may need to be sort of a miniature version of that, but I guess my feeling would be, and my suggestion to y'all, is that for, for next year, it makes sense to concentrate on that overall code and not try to take on additional small areas on top of doing that and on top of implementing these and implementing I-35. So, that's kind of where I would see the next steps.
Staff certainly agrees, so our plate is getting pretty full. So, you look at these two area plans, Old Town that Claire talked about earlier, I-35 overlay district, which still needs to be finalized, there, I just don't think there's any way we could take on any additional area plans. We really need to move forward on the studies that we've done and make these a reality before we try to take on anything else. And I have to remind you, the next step for this team is revision of the development code, and so that will be the major undertaking really for the consulting team over this next year.
So, questions, comments? So, so this was our, our last item, I think, for the agenda? Okay, that's the end of the slides. So, so I guess, as we've gone through the day yesterday, I'm trying to take some quick notes about the direction that you've given on the different items, so if you would like, I'll let me try to recap those and see if I've got at least the shorthand version of that. I know the staff has been keeping track of the detailed notes, but let me just run through those quickly before we wrap up. We started off yesterday morning in terms of talking about the youth council and the recommendations that staff, why you concurred with those, you were in agreements with those improvements so that next year's class will be even better than this year's. You were in agreement with the process that staff is taking forward for the Castle Hills annexation, to stay with the timeline that you had given before, and so we're interested in that. In terms of special events, the KT Day Jam session, the concurrent was the idea of having the stage being on the, on the city hall steps with looking into anyway, a screen or something else on the plaza to try to combine that. I believe you were in agreement with the, the recommendations that James brought you about the Fourth of July event. The holiday stroll, you wanted to keep on both Saturdays. You were not particularly interested in continuing the holiday market at this point, but rather looking at the mix of which things happen on which day, so that that can maybe be enhanced in the future. So, that was, that was that priority. On your issues of interest, I think that there's a whole lot of great information that we got from that. We talked about several of those that kind of floated to the top of our, our general priority discussion yesterday, but I think all of us recognize that there are pieces of each one of those that can move forward, and so I think Donna and the staff have a whole kind of marching orders on that one to move forward with.
Yeah, I want to step back on that, and I'm going to do a report for you, because as we walk through the rest of the material, after your, your interest, topics of interest discussion, I think you see how so many of the, of the topics actually fit into the small area plans and other items that we've talked about. So, I really need to take, the staff, I need to sit down and look at prioritization related to your areas of interest and the smaller.
So, last night, late afternoon, evening, last evening, there weren't decisions made, but I, I believe that everybody got a lot of great ideas and lessons from the folks involved in Oak Cliff and in the Bishop Arts District, and seeing all of that development and learning how that happened, what worked and what didn't. So, I think that can be applied in a lot of places. This morning, when we talked about the crime abatement ordinance, you were in favor of going forward with the action plan that the chief provided to focus on the hotels as a nuisance with the secondary backup of lawsuits if needed. In terms of public engagement tools, the approach of enhancing the Gov QA was, was supported. There was a lot of concern and focus on making sure that whatever kind of mobile city hall, that there are clear objectives and clear ways to see how it's working, and to see that as one bigger, one part of a bigger set of action steps on public engagement. So, I think we're all in agreement on that one. Together, Louisville Coalition recommendations that Claire brought forward, wanting to expand that coalition and looking at that was something that you also supported, and moving forward with the Old Town strategy. There's a number of steps there that will each come back to you with the intention to make, making sure to address property rights correctly, but that that was, was something to move forward with on Old Town. Again, with Clyde Warren, I think there was a lot of good ideas for thinking about programming, about Wayne Ferguson, which ties back to several of your issues of interest, as well as to Stacy's Parkmaster Plan. This afternoon, you agreed on the approach to revising the park development fee ordinance and adopting, taking action on submitted waivers, and then on the strategic planning, the recommendations that Gina brought forward in terms of additional ways to improve the strategic planning, develop portals and make that, the open budget portal to make that more transparent to residents. So, there's several items on the plate for expanding and opening up that process, and then as you start to, as you get to the point of updating the 2025 plan to merge those city priorities and make a connection between those. And the direction I hear from you on these area plans is for us to move forward with the next steps of taking these ideas out to the community again, to vet those and come back with a, a refined plan for you. So, you know, when you go through that list and you think about those things, you have covered so much ground in the last couple of days, and I have to say that it's just been wonderful to see the dialogue that's gone on, the creative ideas, the great work of the staff, and there's so much staff effort put in with the ideas here as well, and so I think there's just a whole lot crammed into these two days, and to me, anyway, a lot has been accomplished with that. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back to Donna and to the mayor, and we can wrap up what we've done earlier.
So, Mayor and Council, I would personally think Karen Walls, I think she's done an incredible job with the retreat this year, and I'd like to give her a round of applause.
I should say how much I enjoy working with her all every year. It's always, it's always fun to take a different approach and try some new things like we did this time, and, and I really appreciate the team and this community you have.
You know, Karen is at a place in her life where she gets to hand select the cities she works with. Not every city gets to work with Karen, so we really are blessed that, that Louisville is one of her, excuse. So we really are blessed that Louisville is one of her, well, excuse me, is her favorite city. So council, I do thank you. I know it's been a long two days, but it means so much for, to staff to have your direction and your guidance on these issues. We will be bringing final reports back to you on several of the topics. So we thank you very much.
I think the staff needs to be thanked because you guys have been working hard preparing for this for the last few months. Great job.
Set up and all that recreating the council rooms, worked out real well. And the council did a good job. We had a couple of dust ups down there. I'm not sure where it all was. We had a couple of deals, but I think it did work out quite well. And I, I don't, maybe it's because we did it at the very end. The comments about Tech Stock and the trees. So, you know, the states are coming in and mow twice a year, no matter if it's needs it or not. So this will be one way to work through that and to break up some of the monopoly, particularly down at that interchange at Business 121 and 34 and Dentap and whatever all that. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, is there any other action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor, signal five. I say nine. Pose. We adjourn.